We'll now reconvene for open meeting. Now have certification before it's meeting.
Whereas the AcuMac County School Board has convened a closed meeting on the state pursuant to an affirmative record vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas Section 2.1 that's thirty-seven seventy-one D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the AcuMac County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're gonna do the approval statement since we didn't get through all of our...
I can't hear you. You can check your mic.
Is your mic working Janet? Because mine's clear.
I believe so. There we go. Ma'am. Hey, you're done.
Maybe you can get closer.
May I ask you, Clark, for a real call?
Mr. Spadell?
Present.
Mr. Taylor?
Present.
Dr. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Neal?
Here.
Ms. Handy?
Here.
Mr. Whitburn?
Here.
Mrs. Turner?
Here.
Mrs. Bowman?
Here.
Mr. White?
Present.
Dr. Hall?
Here.
And Beth O'Neal?
Can we stand and pledge a flag?
I salute you to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve of the agenda?
Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as adjusted.
Second.
We're gonna adjust Section Five and Section Six. We have a couple of presentations, so those folks can present, and some of them have traveled far and wide, and they can be on their way. So we will switch by the steps. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Is there...
Okay.
Good evening. May I have noticed that you have a frisbee at your place and as well as a little pen. This is National School Lunch Week 2024, and as part of our celebration, if you participate tomorrow, you will be served a beefy nachos with cheese on a school logo frisbee with corn muffin and a tossed salad. And yes, we will put paper on the frisbees before it's served. It's incredible what Facebook can come up with, isn't it? But anyway, we just wanted to share that with you all, that this is National School Lunch Week. They started the HVAC install at the tech building today, completion next Friday at hundred percent, and the bat company completed the work last week. They were onsite yesterday and did not see any bats. We are working in the finance department on coming up with a procedural manual for purchasing, such as we did for hiring. So we've begun work on that, and hopefully we can be presenting that within the next meeting. And then I've attached my federal report, since I can't be in two places at one time, I just left it on the second page. So if there's any questions on the first page, please let me know. It looks like from this report that we've met everything except for Title V, but remember, we do not have our vouchers processed yet for September. So we are expecting to meet the Title V spending requirement. And then you'll see the big changes on the second page, which is why I left that up there. Going down midway, we will expect to reach the mentor teacher spend down requirement of the ten-five. We discussed previously that we could not meet the RARS, R-A-R-S, or the Educator Recruitment and Retention, because that required teachers to sign up to take classes, and we actually provided those classes for all who signed up. We did meet the other requirements. We spent all but forty, just under forty-eight thousand for summer programs, which was actually better than what I had anticipated we would, and we've been discussing for a while that we could not meet the before and after school spend down because of lack of students and lack of staff. You'll see the very top number, we have reimbursed both. That says through September thirtieth, but that's only payrolls through September thirtieth, so we still have vouchers. We will meet that spend down requirement and have spent all of the S-3 money. Are there any other questions?
So we're just returning the before and after school money and the summer programs. Those two are going.
Yes, ma'am. And the RARS and the educational recruitment, which we had discussed that prior. Yes. At this point, that's the only money that will be returned.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Elise? Thank you. Eastern Shore Rural Health. Always nice to see you ladies.
Good evening. I'm Jeanette Edwards, and I'm the CEO of Eastern Shore Rural Health, and I would like to introduce Dr. Joan Lingan, who is our Chief Medical Officer, and I'd also like to introduce our board over there. I've got board members in case with... Could you all stand? Yes. And Amy Bull, who is an employee of Eastern Shore Rural Health. They are here in case you have any questions about the program at all after we do speak. I want to thank you heartfelt appreciation for letting us come and talk about the school telehealth program. I want to give a huge shout out to Dr. Hall, who has enthusiastically supported this program because I think she's seen the benefits. I think she's seen the benefits of what it can do for the students, along with the parents who you have to think about in situations like this. This is a pilot program. It is successful across the state and other schools, but what you do is you tailor it to the school that you're in, according to the area, the geography, you tailor it to the kids, and if you're in a high school or a elementary school. And can I, how do I move that? Can you tell me? Now. Thank you. I didn't even think about that. Keep going, keep going. Right here, this is a map of Eastern Shore Rural Health. Currently, we have thirteen sites that we practice at. The ones with the arrows are where we partner with you all, thank you very much, with our school dental programs. And I think we've been here before and talked to you about the success. We also go into four schools, and we do what's called a TOPS program. It's a traveling oral program, and what we do in those schools will screen the children, and if they have dental needs, they will go to one of the sites, either at the Tompkins, Pumpkinhead, Barton, and Duell. Currently, we have access for the children to get in the centers, but we want to make it easier and quicker for the children to be seen and get back to school, which we all think we know that's what is necessary. At this time, I would like Dr. Lingan to talk about the benefits of the program and the equipment that we would be using.
So the biggest advantage of this is to expand access for your students to medical care. The equipment that we're gonna use is made by a company called Title Care, and since, of course, this is a school board, we're gonna do a little show and tell. I have some pictures of these units as well. But basically, this is, the units that this company makes are used in over three thousand schools across the country by other community health centers such as us. Just as a reminder, Eastern Shore Rural Health is one of the community health centers that make up the national network of community health centers. There are approximately twenty-six community health centers in Virginia, but fourteen-hundred across the United States and the territory. We are actually the largest primary care network in the United States. So the benefits of school telehealth, again, timely access for those students to medical care decreases the need for parents to take time off to get the sick children and bring them to the center, and again, when they're not waiting to get an appointment to see one of our providers, decreases student absences, and then speeds their return to class, and then also really increases professional satisfaction for your school-based nurses. And if you talk with nurses, one of their frustrations is they've got this kid, they really want to get this kid into care, and sometimes there can be some delays. So again, the units we're talking about are on these carts. You can see there's a mounted iPad. They're extremely heavy and definitely built for, to be in a school environment, and the things that we can do is we can actually evaluate the ear, the lungs, we can listen to heart sounds, we can take pictures of the throat, we can identify heart rate, temperature, and do an abdominal exam. Next slide. So again, I'm holding some of these units, but this is the main unit. Each of these other peripherals attached to it. So this one allows you, it's X is a tongue depressor, as you can see. The one in the middle there is actually a stethoscope, and the one at the end allows a picture of the interior. So these can either be static pictures that are sent to one of our providers, or they can actually do a real-time evaluation of the student with one of the nurses. So we would have a nurse in the school who would be what we call a tele presenter, and it would be her job to basically take these images and arrange the time for the provider to meet with the student. Again, a picture of what that looks like, taking, looking at the student's eardrum, and this one taking a picture, looking at their throat. We would be using CLEO waved point-of-care testing, and what that basically means is rapid tests you can do right there in the school clinic, things like strep, COVID, flu. Our nurse would work with the students and with our providers in order to get that student assessed remotely. We're gonna start out with, our goal is around twenty hours per week, with the goal being to start this early second, early spring semester at the school that is decided to be the first choice. I think we're still kind of working on that detail, and then as we develop the program, kind of work out the kinks, see what other schools we roll that out to.
What we'd like to do is just with the process, we've hired a pediatric nurse. This nurse will go into the schools, and then when the student comes into your school nurse, what she would do is she would evaluate them, can I take care of them, or do they need to go on and see a provider? At that time, our school nurse would do the vitals, set it up with the telehealth in the school at our center, and then the patient could be seen following that. Either the nurse or the provider would call the parent and let them know. The parent would pick the child up, would not have to take them to the medical center, but could then go pick up, if needed, the medicine, get them home. And our goal with this program, one, is to first get that sick child treated as soon as we can. Sometimes it can take a day or two before they can get an appointment and get in, according to when the child can get picked up from school. And next, I think we know, the sooner we can get a child back in school, it's much better for the parent. I think about the parent, I can remember when I'd have a sick child and have to call into work again and say, "I'm out again," but to get the parent back to work and get the child back to school. So I really appreciate, and I hope y'all are as excited about this program as we are, because I just, I think it's the next telemedicine. It's the next stage of healthcare, and I never would have thought about telehealth before COVID hit, but that kind of changed the flavor of what we do with healthcare. So are there any questions that we can answer for you all?
So I know you said you guys start with the pilot, but once it is to all of the schools, it's successful, you would be providing the actual nurses for...
Correct, correct, yes.
And won't have to add nurses to...
No, no, that is part of this program, that that will be Eastern Shore Rural Health's responsibility. And if y'all can remember, I don't think some of y'all were on the board at that time, but when we started the dental program, this is the same way we started the dental program. We started it small, and then we gradually added another school, another school, and then we added the TOPS program. This would be the same thing that we would do here. We would start out with the pilot program, because there are always gonna be kinks, ups and downs. We'll work those out, and then we'll gradually spread it out. Yes, sir. Great question.
And this is a pilot program for just one semester?
Well, no, we hope it's forever and ever, but we wanted to start it in the spring semester, probably in February.
And it would go for...
It would go for the rest of the school year and then start back up in September. I could almost see a year and a half of a pilot program, you know, one half a year and then a full year, and be working out the policies, be working out the ups and downs of what we need to do, and then we can expand the program.
So a year and a half at one school?
Correct, correct. And it might be shorter. You know, it might be, we've already got a team at Eastern Shore Rural Health working on the policies, working on what is best for the parents and the student, the permission forms. Right now, we have permission forms for the dental, and we will probably just add the medical to that too, so when we get one signature, they can mark it out if they don't want one seen. But those are the processes that we are working on, yes. So it might be a shorter period, or it might be a little bit longer, hard to say, but I think we have enough colleagues in the state and across the country that we can talk to and say, "This isn't working as well, what are you doing?" and find best practices.
And our thought was to send the paperwork home right after the holiday break, rather than risk it getting lost in the backpack over the holidays.
Thank you all, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chairman, Dr. Hall, members of the board, thank you for allowing me to speak with you tonight. My name is Bert Schmitt, I'm the President and CEO of WHRO. With me is Vice President of Education, Omar Seward. We're here tonight because you're one of the twenty-one school divisions that literally own the license to WHRO. We're the only media company in the entire country owned by collaboration of school divisions. We were founded in nineteen sixty-one by two school divisions that created Homeroom One. Homeroom One became WHRO. That's weird. So I come to you every other year to give you a brief summary of the services we provide to you. We provide to you every year an impact statement. I believe you all have a hard copy of this. I'm not gonna go through the statement myself, but we prepared a video, and we've done that in the view that you can share this with your teachers. The superintendent's asked for this, so that you can share with your teachers the services, so the teachers, who are the end users of these products, can be well aware of the services being offered to your teachers. So if we could play the video.
WHRO stands out as the nation's sole public media station owned by a collaboration of twenty-one school divisions. This distinctive ownership model places education at the heart of our mission, influencing every aspect of our work. Our team of educators is committed to offering students, teachers, and families innovative, free, high-quality programs and services. One key service that WHRO offers is E-Media VA, Virginia's leading digital content repository. With nearly one hundred thousand free, top-quality instructional resources, E-Media VA provides educators and students with videos, interactive tools, games, lesson plans, images, and more. This platform is designed to enhance personalized learning and make classroom experiences more engaging. For our youngest learners, WHRO offers exciting educational activities to spark their imagination. Our three education vans visit elementary schools with programs tailored to Virginia's standards of learning, covering literacy, numeracy, scientific investigation, and technology. We also support parents and caregivers, ensuring children are prepared for kindergarten and set up for success in their early school years. For secondary educators, WHRO provides a catalog of twenty-seven award-winning, customizable online courses and digital resources. These media-rich, SOL-aligned courses are designed to integrate seamlessly with various learning management systems. They offer flexibility for face-to-face, flipped, blended, and fully online teaching environments, enriching lessons with engaging content. At WHRO, we celebrate student achievements through competitions that showcase their talents. The Great Computer Challenge, for example, gathers school teams from across the region at Old Dominion University to tackle real-world technology problems. Another highlight is our regional spelling bee. Where middle school champions compete at WHRO's studio for a chance to advance to the Scripps National Spelling Bee. The local competition is recorded and aired on WHRO each April. Elementary students also have an opportunity to shine through our PBS Kids Writers Contest. This competition invites young writers to craft and illustrate their original stories, fostering creativity and critical thinking. Our Student Misery Board reflects our commitment to student engagement. This group of high school students offers feedback on WHRO's content and has opportunities to create their own, influencing our online courses and E-Media VA resources. We're equally devoted to supporting educators through our professional development programs. Our workshops and training sessions provide teachers with cutting-edge strategies and tools, empowering them to inspire and guide their students effectively. Visit WHRO's education webpage to learn more about how these amazing free materials, programs, and resources can benefit you. At WHRO Public Media, we're proud to partner with our local school divisions and the Virginia Department of Education to shape the future of education, one student at a time.
So everything you saw in the video is free, because you invest three dollars per student into WHRO, you get all of that. In your impact statement, there is a financial report on page thirteen that summarizes your investment and then your return. Last year, you invested about three dollars per student, that's about sixteen thousand. Eighth, you received savings of value of four hundred and five thousand. That's a twenty-four to one return on investment, which I'm not sure you're getting that from your broker right now, so I'll hold your hat for that. And I would also point out on page twelve, we've been able to, we've been very fortunate in the last three years to be able to secure some funding from a Eastern Shore foundation that has to give money to a nonprofit, but they want it to be for education, so we're able to get the funds, coordinate with the division, and provide you with educational instructional technology. So you can see, hopefully in the next week or so, we'll be delivering to you four classroom interactive lab panels, displays, and two projectors to help equip your STEM labs. So, and then, I'm in conversations right now for a fourth year, so I can't promise that, but we're looking good for another year of that, so. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, First Reporters, for sharing. I noticed on the inside cover, among the advisory committees, there's a, it's listed as vacant for the educational one. It becomes an opportunity for teachers, or, could you say more about that?
The Education Advisory Committee is made up of a school board member from each school division.
The school board determines which representative would be part of it. We're actually meeting tomorrow, as Dr. Hall does. The superintendents also meet tomorrow at our place. It's a Zoom meeting as well, for those that have to drive a while. But each school board determines who their representative is, and then is welcome to participate. So that's, you guys, whatever you decide. I will note that video, we create that with the intent that it gets to your teachers. So the superintendent's office has the link, it can be shared with the teachers, so they're aware of, you know, it's not just the school board that knows what we're doing, but the actual teachers that would be using the products and services, so that link's available. And we're always available to come up anytime to help folks using online courses or early childhood education, whatever the names are, because you are one of the twenty-one school divisions that own WHRO.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for coming, I appreciate it.
Thanks for just letting me in.
Next up is public comment.
Rules of public comment. Identify yourselves by name and not a one I address. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Individuals may reserve or transfer their time to another speaker. Specific personnel matters must not be initiated at a public meeting. Speakers cannot be abusive, threatening, or use profanity. Specify the nature of your remarks. Speakers who have previously spoken on a subject with a public comment should not be allowed to readdress the board during the same public comment period. Specific questions should be resolved prior to the meeting by contacting the superintendent or the appropriate staff member. Anyone who would like to present a PowerPoint presentation for public comment has to present the presentation twenty-four hours in advance for review by the staff for appropriateness. All questions shall be directed to the chair, who will, at her discretion, solicit the response from the appropriate staff member.
Hi, I have two public comments that we received timely in email, like we had set up in the rules, and I'd like to read. They are, I'm not timing it, but they are under the three minutes, because I timed it early.
We'll trust you.
Unless I mess up. The first is from Sandra White, who lives on thirteen-five forty-six Shellbridge Road in Painter, Virginia. "AcuMac County School Board, the politically correct thing to do is thank you for your service to our community and our children, but I'm not sure of anything that you have done for our community or our children. From what I have read in the newspapers and discussions of AcuMac residents who have children in the system, you as a board are more concerned with putting a brown-skinned woman in the back of the room than the school system. Let's make this clear."
We're gonna have order, we're gonna have order tonight. Thank you. Continue, please continue, Sandra.
Sure. "Let's make this clear. People of color no longer sit in the back of the bus, nor will they be dismissed. People of color, by the grace of God, are out of the cotton fields, learning and living lives their ancestors never dreamed of. You are more concerned with having private meetings to help your own political racist agendas. AcuMac County School Board, you are a joke and a disgrace to the children, teachers, school nurses, bus drivers, administrators, and all others you were elected to help." That word, "elected," chosen by the residents of AcuMac County. Now tell me, what is it that you are teaching our children? Let me answer that. You are teaching them that if they don't get, if you don't get your way, you will act like a two-year-old. a two-year-old. You are teaching them that adults who don't know how to put their differences aside and talk have more to learn than the children themselves. Yes, this upsets me very much. I was once proud to say I went to school in Akamak County. My children went to school in Akamak County. Now Akamak County schools are a laughingstock and an embarrassment, and yes, I do blame some of it on you. Let me go a step further and talk about the parents who also have a responsibility in this mess. Parents hold your children accountable for their actions. Your children are not your friends. Teachers are there to teach. Start the training at home. Yes, I know parenting is hard, but it is so rewarding when you've done all you can and prayed all the prayers you can pray, and your kid is still acting out, but all at once they get it because you haven't given up on them. In all of this, I want to see the board get back on track and at the business at hand, which is helping our kids. We all must remember, our children are not our future, they are our now. I am a woman of color, a daughter, a mother, and a person who believes in helping others all that I can. So please become a united unit for our children. I pray for each of you and your willingness to meet each other halfway. Thank you for listening." The second is from Kristy Bloat. She lives at two-four-two-six-eight Oyster House Road in Akamak, Virginia. "My name is Kristy Bloat. I am the cafeteria manager for Nandua Middle School. I would like to address some recent misinformation that has been published in regards to wages and raises for ACPS employees. The recent comp study was meant to adjust the wage disparity between our county and nearby counties when it came to support staff. An article was published in last Friday's Eastern Shore Post that stated that the employees that were affected by the comp study had received approximately a ten percent raise. That was not the case, at least not for cafeteria workers and managers. The numbers I've seen were in the two-and-a-half to five percent range. The article also stated that all workers now receive a minimum of fifteen dollars an hour. That is also incorrect. The part-time and sub-workers in the cafeterias are well below the fifteen-dollar-an-hour mark, in some cases by as much as two dollars. A quick Google search will show that cafeteria managers in neighboring counties are making a minimum of five thousand more per year, five thousand dollars more per year. I've seen several making over ten thousand dollars to fifteen thousand dollars a year more. I understand longevity in the position would warrant higher pay. I'm referring to the lowest salary manager in Akamak County in comparison to the lowest salary manager in other counties. I understand the cost of living in other counties may be high, and that accounts for some of the wage disparity. However, the cost of living here in Akamak County is rising as well. I took this job because the schedule aligned better with my children's schedules. I would not have been able to do so if my husband wasn't making what he does, as well as providing health insurance for our family. I cannot imagine how any cafeteria worker could survive on their own without a second income. That also brings up the issue of health insurance. The cost to us, while lower than last year, is still not really attainable by many. For example, if I had to cover myself, my husband, and our two children, it would take approximately half of my paycheck. Now imagine if there was a single worker trying to support two children with their wages and relying on health insurance through Akamak County. It would take at least two-thirds of their check, if not more. What does that leave them to live on?"
I'm going to call the first five speakers. If you could come up to the podium and line up, that would be great. The first one is Todd Wessels. Milton Bunting is number two. Quintavion Washington, number three. I apologize if I'm not pronouncing this correctly. Leniquel Washington. Please come in line up behind Mr. Wessels.
Got to sort of the stage.
You're supposed to say your name and at this first.
Todd Wessels, Sheriff of Akamak County. I live on two-four-four-seven-two, Nankot Gardens Road in Nankot, Virginia. Good evening, Chairwoman Janet Turner and members of the board. I come to you again tonight as your sheriff discussing cooperation between Akamak County Insurance Office and Akamak County Public School Administration. As I told you all before, when my office receives reports of school threats or reports of criminal activity occurring at one of our schools, it's critical that my deputies and investigators are provided with the information necessary to conduct a proper investigation. This ensures that every child and staff member in the schools are safe. In recent months, my deputies have investigated several cases in our schools, including blackmail, child pornography, assaults, assaults by mob, bomb threats, and threats of bringing guns and other threats to the school. All these cases, in regards to information sharing, are inconsistent. had a case of child nude images were sent out and reshared to several students at a school. One student was actually violent and the victim. And the victim turned for money. During that case, the school board, I mean, the school administration cooperated with our investigation, and we were able to clear it up. We had another incident. Two students got in a fight on the bus after leaving Arcadia High School. Corporal Campbell was preparing to leave for the day. When he was asked by assistant principal Steve because the bus was coming back, soon as the bus got back, the two students started fighting again outside the bus. Deputy Campbell had to physically separate the students to stop the fight. He released them to the school system and was later informed he could not get the demographic information. Superintendent advised Deputy Campbell that this was a school-level issue and the principal would, if he wanted to press charges, they would be provided with demographics at the Deputy Stevens working a case involving child pornography. At that time, we learned that the phone was in possession of the principal at Arcadia Middle School. Deputy Campbell retrieved the phone and was later told he needed to bring it back, and he basically told him, you know, I'm not giving you a phone back with child pornography on it. Text message sent to nine-one-one stating they're shooting. We painted the message, Arcadia Middle School. After looking up the number and were able to positively identify the suspect, demographic information was provided to the school, by the school staff. And I can go on and on with these fights. One other, based on, I'm getting ready, I'm running out of time. I just need some cooperation. I mean, we get cooperation sometimes, sometimes we don't. So all I'm asking, you know, when my deputies and investigators get these calls, to get some cooperation. Thank you.
My name is Milton Bunny. I live at two-six-four-eight-two Savageville Road in Nankot, Virginia, and I yield my time to continue.
Good evening. My name is Quintavion Washington, two-five-three-four East Main Street, Only, Virginia. Good evening, esteemed board members. Stand before you today not only as a concerned member of the community, but as a voice for many people who feels that justice and fairness has been compromised. We are here to discuss the integrity and well-being of our students, but we must also address how we treat those in leadership like Dr. Rhonda Hall, who has dedicated her life to this very cause. Dr. Hall has been the subject of public humiliation, news articles, Facebook statuses, and this board has stripped her of the very respect and protection that she deserves as our superintendent. Also, by asking her to repay what was already given to her, yes, it may have been into legal ramifications, but let's be honest, everyone before her received their pay without this level of scrutiny. Why now does this board suddenly want to go by the books, play by the rules, and forget the practices of the past? As Dr. Martin Luther King once said, injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. This board threatens the actions and the trust and integrity of this community. We cannot stand by while one of our very own is treated unjustly. This affects us all. The community feels deeply that this board no longer stands united for the greater good. When leaders fail to work together, the consequences ripple down to the students and the families that they are supposed to serve. The Bible says that a house divided by itself cannot stand, but in the words of Fannie Lou Hamon, nobody's free until everybody is free. By failing to support Dr. Hall, you are setting the precedence of division and discord.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. We're not supposed to call names, so you could just...
That's my superintendent, Hall.
We're reporting her as superintendent.
Yes, ma'am. Definitely. By failing to support the superintendent, we are setting the precedence of division and discord. This is not what we want to teach our children, our future. What are we saying to them when we cannot stand as one? As a community, we are disappointed with this board because one of the principles that we teach our children and have been taught ourselves, the golden rule, do unto others as you would have them do unto you, feels like a forgotten value by this board. We expect fairness, respect, and compassion to be shown, especially to those in leadership positions who serve our schools. Yet, here we are tonight, we see the very opposite. How can we expect our children to embrace this principle when we, as adults, do not model it ourselves? This board was elected to put the very well-being of our students first, and somewhere along the way, that has been forgotten. We must refocus on unity, justice, and the protection of the students that we serve. As Nelson Mandela said, "Education is the most powerfulst weapon which we can use to change the world." If we continue to allow our politics and our personal grievances against the superintendent to overshadow our commitment to education, we are failing the next generation. The students are watching and deserve better. I am calling this board to action to return to the principles of fairness, unity, and justice. It is time to get back to togetherness, to stand as one in the face of challenges, and to prioritize what truly matters, the education and well-being of our students. As I leave you tonight, I leave you with James Baldwin's most powerfulst quote, "Not everything that we face can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it is faced." We are facing this issue now, and we expect change. The community is watching, and we demand better. Thank you.
My name is Leniquel Washington. I live at two-four-one-five-four Church Road, Akamak, Virginia, and I defer my three minutes to Dr. Fetterman.
Good evening. My name is Dr. James J. Fetterman, thirty-two-two-fifty-five Keller Pond Road. Democracy is the cornerstone of our very being as people, state, and nation. Democracy allows the people to exercise their political muscle to determine who will represent them. During our last local election, the citizens of Akamak County cast their votes for individuals to serve as their voice on the school board, county board of supervisors, and other entities in local and state government. Some races were uncontested, but for those in contested races, if the people did not select you to be their voice, there was a reason. Clearly, you were not their what or who. Self-reflection is powerful. The ongoing tactic to divide us rather than bring us together must stop. We must maintain a protocol for dialogue that encourages citizen leaders and elected officials to address their own prejudices before tampering with policies, rules, and regulations that impact the communities in which our students live, learn, and grow. Some of our educators tolerate these prejudices, as many community members just sit and shake their heads. I am not that person. Tonight, I am not the voice of AEA, BEA, or NEA, but I stand before you as a human with a reasonable allotment of common sense and the ability to assume good intent where applicable. I am here because I heard the cry, so I answered the call of the people of Akamak County who felt, seen, and witnessed a system of chaos, confusion, and the misuse of power, as well as the ongoing attacks against the superintendent that is rooted in racism, deceit, and hatred. Legitimately concerned people of Akamak County who often feel that there is nothing that can be done. I am here to remind everyone that we, the people, are never without power, influence, or persuasion. We have to just use it. To be clear, we, the people, does not give exclusivity to being a phenomenal member of the Divine Nine or having black friends who happen to be professionals too, but the people who are the voice and the vote regardless of the community or civic organization in which they belong. However, my unanswered question remains. Is a strong and educated distinguished black lady of Delta Sigma Theta and Sorey Incorporated with an earned PhD and over thirty years of experience so much of a threat to a group of five and a few wannabes that being on the school board or social media is your only validation for existence? It's certainly seemingly that way to me. Having served in the highest position in the Virginia Educational Association, over the past twelve years, I have successfully and strategically navigated personally and fought and won and advocated some of the toughest cases across the country, right here in the Commonwealth. My next fight, this fight, should not be as tough, but nonetheless, I will give it the same two steps and jab as I did every other fight over the past twelve years, right here on where I'm proud to call home, the beautiful Eastern Shore. Respectfully, respectfully, I place the entire Akamak County School Board on notice that the people of District Seven, which represents only, have successfully secured a recall petition with the required signatures for the recall of an elected official in the name of Janet Martin Turner. This petition demands that she be removed as a member of the Akamak County School Board as outlined in section twenty-four-point-two-dash-two-thirty-three in the Code of Virginia. This code requires that ten percent of the one thousand two hundred and thirty-seven votes cast in twenty-twenty-three from District Seven requires a minimum of one hundred and twenty-four votes with notarized signatures to be vetted by the registrar, who shall forward the petition to the circuit court to initiate the recall. Representing the people, this petition shall take precedence over every case that may already be scheduled on the docket of the court. I will be back with more from the people. The people must patiently wait the response from the Commonwealth. I am Dr. James J. Fetterman. For the people, by the people, God bless the people with the removal of Janet Turner as school board chair.
I will remind everyone, it is number three, four, and our rules do not call people by name. The next five speakers, please come to the microphone. Cheryl Stanley, Kenny Lane, Reverend Mark Lane.
May I turn the other way? I can throw my voice. My mother taught me.
If you look that way, you'd like, but you need to...
I don't want my back to you either.
You need, you, you may have... You need...
Take it out just a second.
My name's, is there anybody you'd give me two minutes? I'm Irish.
I will.
Okay. My name is Sherry Stanley. I am not speaking from anybody's viewpoint you know. I'm speaking because I'm related to Ernie Stanley, Joe Stanley, Sarah Stanley, and John Stanley, who told me that people who sit on fences have voted. When I lived in Fairfax County, there was a woman named Dr. Clantia Tucker. She was made principal of Mount Vernon High School against the wishes of the powers to be in the county. They knew nothing about her. So I was taught that you can't judge people without knowing what they're going to do. So I went to her and I told her I'd back her up. Turns out, she was the only principal in Fairfax County for years who was written up in the Washington Times as having improved accounting. You have principals in this county for whom I've worked, and you have a, and here we are again with the superintendent. Nobody does everything right. Nobody. But I know I'm not the principal, who is now principal of Arcadia Middle School, Pankateek Elementary School, Nandua Middle School. I've seen them teach, and I've seen them in school, and I've seen this woman. I went to see this woman, the now superintendent, when she was an assistant superintendent. She never looked at her watch. She never rushed me out of the room. She never rushed me out of the room. I went to see her again as superintendent. Not only have I seen her, people come to me whether I want them to or not, and parents have told me that she will listen to them. And she will intercede. And you have administrators in this county, starting with your superintendent, and going, I'm gonna say his name, Trey Haney. Miss, okay, the superintendent, and principals at the schools I mentioned, as well as the assistant principals at Acuimat Elementary School and Shinketik Elementary School, who care about the kids and who care about you. If every person in this room would give a couple hours a week to the schools, you would change the schools. If you could get up off of your chairs or get out of work early and go and help your superintendent, help your principals, and you will help the children, and we will have this county humming. This, I've taught all over the nation. This is one of the best counties I've ever been in.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Yvonne Justice Naum. I live at 27376 Whitesneck Road, Parsley, Virginia. I'm a citizen of this county, born and reared here. Never before have I seen such argument, disrespect to people. Since I, along with several other blacks, integrated the all-white Parsley High School in 1964. We were treated like we were not people. And that seems the way that our superintendent is being treated. Only as the people would show respect as they want it to be shown. It doesn't take much to be kind. Some of the things that come out of the meeting that we shouldn't even know about, we hear about it because someone is busy with their mouths. It's not necessary. As was stated before, no one does everything perfectly. If we did, we wouldn't be on this side. We'd be with the Lord. We need to learn to treat, and no matter what the color is, it is my obligation as a person to treat people fairly. If you give me a dollar and then you come back and tell me I owe it back to you, why didn't you think about that before you gave it to me? If I didn't answer the question right because you wanted more information about children or any personal information, I didn't give it to you right like you wanted it, why not go and sit down and discuss it? Instead of putting it in the paper where people call people names and say everything they want to say about them? I'm talking as a parent. I'm seventy-two years old. I have children and grandchildren who went to school in Acuimat County. I've never seen this happen before. It is time that it stops. And if someone who's sitting in either of these seats doesn't know how to be kind, doesn't know how to be respectful, doesn't know how to be pleasant, you need to get up and go home. You don't need this. This is not what this county is all about. Our children are first and foremost. And then we all have hearts, we all have feelings, and we need to learn to be more kind and more gentler to one another. It's become open season on anyone whom you don't like. Say anything, do anything, carry anything. It's not right. And if the superintendent is not doing as this board feels she should be doing, you need to get a forum with the citizens of Acuimat County, parents especially, who have children in the school system, and let's sit down and talk about this thing and stop being ignorantly loud about things that don't matter. It's time to stop it, and I pray that we'll have sense enough to do that.
My name is Jenny Lane. I am, I live in fifteen two. I'm sorry, I'm at six o'clock. That's where I live. My name is Jenny Lane. I am currently the manager of the cafeteria at Nandua High School. I'm here, coming here tonight on behalf of my staff, the staff of Nandua High School. We had five of my six full-time employees chosen to be representatives and interviewed for the comp study that was done last year. We came prepared with a folder of information, including our lunch counts and including the money that we were bringing in, all of which had gone up since the manager prior to myself. We also had letters from our staff and administration from Nandua High School on our behalf. When we were at the meeting at the school board office, we met with a lady that was hired from Florida, which I felt was a waste of our tax dollars. To our amazement, no one from our Human Resource or the School Board Office was present during our meeting. How do you go by information that a stranger compiles without being there and talking with employees that are there that you all oversee? To me, it was a lack of respect on your part, and to make it even worse, you made us feel like we weren't worthy to be heard. I was even more amazed when we sat with an empty, a half-empty container of donuts in front of us, and we weren't even offered a bottle of water. This county has voted for a change, and you all are an intricate part of that change. Our race was a joke, which you all can keep it. And my 1.29% is what I received. That gives me $360 for the year. When you add in our insurance for my husband and mine, I bring home about $500 twice a month. However, it doesn't mean, it doesn't seem that Acuimat County wants to keep valued employees. We choose to be in food service. However, I can right now leave and go somewhere else, maybe Walmart or World Farms, and make $15 an hour to start. I do this job because I love the kids. I take pride in what I do. I work late hours and don't get paid for it. In conclusion, I am tired. I'm tired of the county that says you suck. And yes, when you tell us that our food sucks, it's degrading to each and every one of us in food service.
Hello, can y'all hear me? My name is Reverend Mark Lane. I live at 24435 Adelaide Street in Parsley, Virginia. That was my wife. I'm coming here on behalf of her and the ignorance of raises. 1.29% does not even meet the national standard. 1.29% give her $366, which adds only to a dollar a day for an entire year. Take it and keep it. As a matter of fact, I came with a check for $2,000 to get back to you all so you can take her job and shove it up your backside. This is where I want you to understand. That is my wife. She loves what she does, and the students at Nandua High School love her for who she is. Every teacher, every principal, every person at that school knows who she is. You wanna know why? Because she has lunch lady on her license plate. That's how much she loves her job. That's how much she loves those students. That's how much she loves what she does. But you all seem to think a national firm that you paid thousands of dollars for to come and give you a comprehensive study to tell you that she deserves 1.29%. 4.53% is what the average full-time under them got paid, which raises their salaries to a great $16,000 a year. And you wanna talk about a national average? Well, in the national average in the state of Virginia, in Fairfax County, the superintendent makes $400,000 a year. The number one in Virginia, he only makes $120,000 a year. Mrs. Hall, you make, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Superintendent, you make a little bit more than that, but I wanna say this to be sure y'all understand. At the beginning, when she had that whatever raise y'all decided to take, which absolutely makes no sense to me to take it back after you gave it to her, whoever gave it to her. And if you didn't give it to her, how in the world did you get it to begin with? That makes no sense to me to begin with. But besides that, if at 5%, if you like numbers and statistics, that means twenty-four cafeteria managers got what she got in one raise. Think about that.
Can I hear you? Please come up to the microphone. Kim Mills, Abigail Brass, Sheila West, Cedric Cooper, Sam Seller. Kim Mills, Abigail Brass, Sheila West, Cedric Cooper, Sam Seller.
Good evening. My name is Kim Mills. I live at 24322 Calum Street, Parsley. I'm here tonight to voice my concerns that I have with the Evergreen Study of Raises and Classifications of the Instructional Assistance. Previously worked for ACPAS from 2005 to 2010 as a kindergarten IA. I've been an IA at KES for the last three years. When I was hired in 2021, I was given five years of credit towards my salary because it was actually an IA in ACPAS before. Therefore, I had, according to the pay scale that I receive with my current contract, eight years of experience, which is step nine. First, I'm gonna talk about the classification of instructional assistance. We are required to either have successfully passed the professional exam or have two years of college credits to be considered highly qualified for the position of IA. My concern is how the IAs and permanent substitutes are on the same pay scale. There are no special requirements to be a permanent sub, so why are we on the same pay scale? If we are going to keep allowing the same pay, then why don't we just drop the highly qualified requirements to be an IA or change the pay scales? And speaking of pay scales, I will now discuss compensations or like thereof as a result of the Evergreen Study. The day we received our letters from Human Resources, we all discussed what we had received. I was shocked to learn that my raise was 8.8%, eight tenths of a percent. This equates to a raise of $190 a year for me, $7.91 a payday before taxes. What was even more shocking was that others were given random raise amounts, no consistency, let alone the huge raises given to certain employees at central office. I was informed of the salaries of all the instructional assistants in the county, so I decided to do a spreadsheet of my own and group everyone into their years of experience and salaries to match. All of the IAs were being paid according to the pay scale we all received with our contracts at the beginning of the year. I realized some interesting facts about the raises that we were given to some IAs. Looking at coworkers with the same number of years as myself, one was given a 15.5% raise, which was $3,585 a year. I was given, again, an eighth of, eight tenths of a percent raise, which was $190 a year. I'm trying to see equity in this pay adjustment. Other interesting findings I've had. An IA with four years' experience now makes as much as an employee with 12 years' experience. Another IA with 11 years' experience now makes what a 19-year employee makes. How does any of this make sense? We are told that our hard work and dedication and our school's diligence is appreciated. Our contributions are invaluable to the success of our students and community. This is a funny way of showing that.
I will, if you give me a second. My name is Abigail Brass. I live at 5347 Oak Drive on Shinketik. And I am here this evening, my daughter is an eighth-year student at Shinketik Combined Schools. I've come before you today to address concerns that I have with student safety and the communication to student-parent population within Acuimat County School District, particularly the Shinketik Combined Schools. Many of you are aware, and if you are not already aware, a student at the Shinketik High School threatened to shoot up the school on specific dates, one of them being tomorrow on 10/16 and the other date being on Friday, 10/18. These threats were made via Snapchat. We, myself, and my boyfriend became aware of them when my daughter came home and told us. We contacted the SRO at Shinketik Combined School, who informed us that he was already aware of these threats and that they were previous from the week before, that school officials at the Shinketik Combined Schools were aware. My question for you is, why are you not communicating with our student-parent population? Why are we not addressing the student-parent population to let them know that the school is aware of such threats? Such threats that are being addressed. Your children are, or telling us, hey, your children are safe, we're addressing these threats, and we'll get back to you when we have more information. None of those things are being done. It is your job as a school board to ensure the safety of our children at all times. This threat was repeated by the same exact student again today. Stated, regardless of being suspended, I still plan to shoot up the school tomorrow, is what he said. I spoke with the principal today and the vice principal, who advised me that they have been made aware of this 15 minutes prior to my phone call that they were investigating. I asked them to contact the police, and then I was told, yes, I will contact the SRO officer now. Fifteen minutes have gone by. He should have already been contacted. The vice principal then called me back and said that they were aware and that they were addressing the issue. When I asked what their plan was for tomorrow, the vice principal informed me that they were planning on having an increase in police presence at the school tomorrow. But again, why as a school board haven't you reached out to your student-parent population to inform parents and students that these matters are being taken very seriously and are implementing the necessary measures to ensure student safety and faculty safety? There was, the superintendent did make a statement in a letter that says misinformation that the safety was one of your priorities. With all due respect, that should be the absolute top priority at all times. You stated you implemented safety measures through our district to include metal detectors, bag checks, and SROs at every entrance of every school. Bag checks are not being checked. They're being opened and shut. Vapes are getting into schools. Students are still vaping in the bathroom. It's also my conclusion that the contract for the Shinketik SROs will be coming to an end in 2025. What is your plan on implementing school safety going forward for our student in our schools? I hope it's not unarmed school security officers. I encourage you not to be naive to your small communities. Tragedy can still occur in a small population.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and School Board Members. My name is Sheila West. I reside at 26073 Needham Drive, Only, Virginia. I thought when I approached the platform, I was gonna say, by hearing the previous presentations, I had nothing to say because everything that was needed to say had been said. And as I looked at the attendance, I was like, well, those that are here have spoken as well. But I do have something to say. Because I've worked for Acuimat County for 34 years, and there were joint meetings with the Board of Supervisors, and never had I seen a superintendent that worked for the school board being asked to sit in a different location in all those years that I've worked. And I've worked, whereas superintendents probably, there were, in the years that I've worked for the county, about six superintendents. And every superintendent said what the superintendent should say. So my question is, why should the now superintendent have been asked to sit elsewhere? I've also learned that, and have been taught that, when you see something wrong, you do something and you say something. And sometimes our voices have been silenced by fear, but no longer will our voices be silenced by fear. I've been reading the articles about what has been going on, and even though my children and grandchildren have graduated, all children are our children, and I'm concerned about all of them. So when I see things like this going on and articles being written about why, what superintendent can't be paid when others were paid, I think a four-year needs to be done. I think a four-year needs to be done to establish what the other superintendents were paying compared to what this superintendent has been asked to give him back. But I read the article and it said, we don't pay the superintendent's salary. The taxpayers do. Well, I'm a taxpayer, so calculate what I pay and give it to the superintendent. Thank you.
Good evening, all. Cedric Cooper, 20351, Big Buck Lane, Melfa, Virginia. I actually signed up to forego my time to someone else, but everything has been said. However, hearing some different things tonight, there are bigger issues in our county that we need to be addressing. This young lady was talking about a school shooting. We're talking about staff being underpaid. It's like having a new car, okay? It can be pretty and shiny, but if the motor doesn't work, you're not moving, okay? Your people or your motor. We're spending too much time focusing on things that really don't matter. Because I think a lot of these things are personal, for whatever reason. Everyone up here, they're qualified people. No one's questioning anyone's qualifications to sit at this table. That's not the issue with our school system. We've got underpaid employees. That's teachers, that's cafeteria, that's janitor, that's everyone involved. We've got concerns about student safety because I'm on the assumption that the school board is here for the students. Let's put the students first. Forget about this other person stuff because the thing is like this. You may not like someone, someone may not like you. However, you're here to do a job together. Whether you like this person, like that person or not. We're here for the common goal of the students. That should be our priority. I moved back home, my wife and I, so our children could be raised here and finish school here. Our youngest son went from kindergarten to graduate from here. It's about graduating from college year because this is where we were born and raised. We didn't have these issues coming up when we were coming through school. I don't understand why it should be now. If anything now, we should be closer than ever. The world that's going on in front of us now, we need to be closer than ever. We're lucky to have a tight-knit community around here. You know, people speak to each other, people wave to each other. This is how it used to be, but that's how we can get it back to. So let's focus on what's important, the children. And put everything else aside because at the end of the day, it really doesn't matter. Thank you all. God bless you.
Hello, my name is Sam Sellar. I live at 28116 Harbor Road, Melfa. I'm here as a concerned taxpayer and resident of Acuimat County. I'd like to address two issues that have me very concerned. The first issue demonstrates a complete disregard for proper procedure, disregard for the legal contractual agreement that the current superintendent entered into with her employer, Acuimat Public Schools. Recently, the superintendent accepted a 5% raise, which she was not entitled to. A raise that netted her close to $9,000 a year over her already hefty salary of $176,000 plus a year. Meanwhile, the lowest-paid employees, those who work directly with students daily, are paid a wage so low that they qualify for public assistance. This is such a disservice to our employees. A second issue is far more grave and could have been deadly for students, teachers, and administration alike under different circumstances. There was an incident. There was a serious threat the superintendent was made aware of and she notified the sheriff. At that point, the sheriff did his job. The superintendent did not. I do not think anything can be clearer than that. I have in my hands a letter from Lisa Coons. Terribly sorry. I apologize. Set my posture. I apologize. I have a letter from the superintendent of the Virginia Department of Education. The letter states that the superintendent was to put in place a threat assessment team on January 1st, 2024. We are 10 months into this year and the superintendent has still not assembled a threat assessment team. This failure of leadership places students and staff in extreme danger should a credible threat materialize. The superintendent was excoriated in this letter for her incompetence, for her failure to put this task force together, and for not following the memorandum of understanding between the school board and the sheriff's office. Regardless of the letter sent out by the superintendent, trying to explain the situation and the excuses the superintendent offered, the truth is the truth. In closing, I'd like to add that most parents that I have heard from expressed a clear vote of no confidence.
Good evening, everyone. School Board members. My name is John Robinson. My name is John Robinson. I live at 23570 Wharton Circle, Rainbridge, Virginia. Well, it seems like everybody said what I had on my mind to say. I'm very glad that people come out and say what was on their mind. And we all don't have to get upset trying to say what I need to say. But I do have one other thing to say, maybe a couple. I haven't seen any school board members on any school bus. Or matter of fact, in any schools, they're trying to see what's going on when we have a problem with these kids on the bus. One other thing that you guys should be looking at. The high school kids, because we don't have enough bus drivers, get home at 5:00 in the afternoon when they get out of school at 2:30. I've been asking for a couple of years that we need one more extra bus driver at each school. And when we find one, we send them down to get the printer prints. Then they gotta wait three or four days before they can get the printer prints done. But if they can't get them while they're right there, what's the problem with that? Why do they have to wait? Then they don't even come back? So it looks like you're not trying to help the, the bus drivers to do their job. I mean, the guys are working, doing two, three, or four trips a day trying to get these kids home. We're not making a lot of money, so we must love the kids. I, I don't understand how you can say that, oh, the bus drivers will be free. No, you don't. No, you don't. Because there's not a bus driver, I don't think there are any more in here besides one, that can say, my salary can't support my household. I've been driving for 12 years. I know my limit. My wife got sick, lost her eyesight, so she couldn't drive. So there I was struggling trying to pay these bills that the bus was paying. The school don't do it, so I had to do a little something on the side. You worry your bus drivers, like a lot of them, the blood pressures are going up. They're getting sick. Lewd season and stuff getting ready to come. You can have more drivers out. What we gonna do? Thank you.
This is what we presented to you, Ms. Only and I, last board meeting. And I know that one of you had called for a vote and then we decided to table the vote. So we're just back with the same proposal to up the minimum salary for any of our employees to $15 an hour. And I know that would, a lot of people have spoken about that today. So I think that would be beneficial. Ms. Only and I also looked at the hourly rates of the SSMs and other part-time workers who work on an hourly basis, raising them to $15 an hour. And Ms. Only did some calculations and we have some of it from the last meeting.
It's approximately, I have it on the agenda, but I'm back and forth. It's approximately an extra $100,000 for the addition that you asked us to look into. We, we did look at trying to raise we did look at also, as we had discussed before, to raise that also including substitutes and long-term substitutes and on the line, that that was too expensive. That's something that will be a budget priority for next year. But we did look at what this board wanted us to look at, who are the lowest-paid workers, the ones receiving $13.13 an hour, to bring them to the same $15 that the class of this classified change would bring. Also noting that this change to $15 an hour raises every single classified level. So there are likely to be, most likely to be additional raises for all cafeteria staff. If you do consider this tonight, we would like to make it effective November 1st, which means that the first paycheck would be realized, it would be November 16th. We're not proposing putting another retroactive because we've had a retroactive and it, it's kind of difficult. But November 1st would be the first date that we could see that we could get this in effect in people's paychecks.
So would this affect cafeteria managers that spent earlier?
Yes, ma'am. So, you know, and, and I'm taking notes and trying to time and everything else. I do realize some of these percentages were low, but this was above and beyond the 5% that every employee in the county received effective July 1st. This was the additional raise for the class comp study. Also, as I spoke to the cafeteria manager earlier tonight, and I've addressed this with this board, we feel that there are still errors out there where some of our employees do not have all of the years' experience as a credit that they need. And we ask everyone to reach out and send an email to either TJ or myself. If, for example, I feel like I had five years somewhere else before I came here, did I receive credit for that? We are more than happy to look into each individual case to make sure that every single individual is receiving the years. There's quite a few here. You can see there's 260 classified, you know, 56 bus drivers, and then 35 administrators. So if you feel that you're not getting your years' credit, I've had an administrator call me before saying, how many years' credit did you give me? We said, oh, we gave you eight when you came here. And she said, that's fine. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure. But there are people we feel out there who do have credit, who do, who do have your service that we're not sure that they have been receiving credit for. And we are happy to look into each individual case.
We haven't turned anybody away.
No.
So the total salary cost, that's 1.2. Is that what you're saying is the raise to all employees and implementation?
Right, but then off on the right there, you see, we multiply that by 25% to factor in benefits and retirement and, you know, all the extras, the French benefits that go along, not just with salary.
Well, that's what we talked about the other night. That's what number I was looking at because I always saw this 1.2.
1.25? Are you talking about the 1.25?
Yeah, but I was talking about the 1.5 you showed them the last, last week.
All the way to the right.
When I saw the 1.2, that's what I wanted to see where by all of something were low. But now I see, yeah, off the sides, the presentation number did. It's 1.5 and we're in the end increasing.
Yes, plus the additional approximately $100,000 for the part-time non-contracted employees.
Remember, we budgeted $1 million. So it's approximately $525,000 plus another $100,000 for the hourly vote.
So the $200,000 that we had last vote was at rest, right? Can you do that with the $100,000?
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
To avoid any confusion, I believe it might be best if we solve those names with salaries. Just that look just like the personnel list. So we know exactly how much, who's getting what raise.
So to be clear, do you want, where do you want the starting point to be? What the last approved amount was and then this approved amount? Or what the July 1st salary was versus this approved amount? And then also, to be clear, which employees do you want this for? Class upon, because that's the change we're discussing.
Whoever's salary is changing. Just like on the personnel list, when someone's salary changes, if we give a bad, somebody's going to pitch basketball and they're going to get a statement for that, that goes on the personnel list. If one employee moves from one place to another, that goes on the personnel list. So all these salaries are changing. So I would like to see them all, so there's no confusion going forward and we're all very clear on what we're putting and who's getting what.
So I would like to propose that you would do that based on job title rather than name? As, as you did last time?
That got into that, that got us into a lot of trouble last time. That's why I'm asking for jobs. I think Ed is speaking first.
I think what we're trying to say is, as some people spoke tonight, they've only gotten a small percentage. So I think we would like to see, because we don't want to see these people getting a dollar more a day raise. Kind of see if they, oh, there's maybe some adjustment they can tweak.
So you want us to take it from the original proposal and include this and have one adjustment? Because, you know, we've already made an adjustment. I'm just trying to get this started. Because we've
I, I can respect that some of the board members are interested in seeing the list name by name. Would it be okay if we went around just to see what the consensus is? Because there could be some of us who are more interested in putting this into effect, particularly when these two staff people have honored what we asked. We had motion on the floor last meeting on this study. And what we had asked previously was for time to review material before we vote immediately. That's been honored. And so here again, it almost feels like we're playing a game with them because now we're adding another layer.
Mr. Spidey, are you good with this or would you like to see some more details? We're classifying. I think it's being unfair. Excuse me. Mr. Spidey, if we're gonna honor Dot and Johnsons to sort of poll everyone.
That's probably District 1 always have to go first. I understand what Ed is saying as well, that, for example, someone said they eat much at all and then everyone else gets a whole lot.
I got a lot of angry phone calls, people who were very upset about, some people getting $15,000 raises and, and a lot of more angry phone calls for people who only got $150.
I think instead of, instead of maybe considering the names, if we could get the list, the salary they had January 1st, the salary they had in July raise, the salary they had last time, the salary they'll have this time. Then we can look across and see if that's too much. If that's too much?
I agree with that experience.
I would also, if I may, when's our next meeting? I know we have a lecture today. Okay, so, so this would push it to December first.
Oh, see, that's not fair.
I'm just, I'm just trying to take... Is my turn there?
It's nothing mad about paying people, just to make sure that, again, you've got some people that are making, getting a fifteen thousand dollar raise, and you've got some people that are like that you all are telling them to move for, that are upset because they only got a top, you know, some concern about that.
How much are they?
Maybe we can go around and...
I, I'm concerned about, um, putting names on a list again. I've said this before, and I'll repeat it here, I can understand, wanted to be sure that we get it right. I am concerned about putting names on a list before, because there are individuals on the board who only reacted until when they saw a particular person's name. My concern is based on the fact that the study is not based on people, it's based on positions.
I say the, the more information, more data we can have, the better the decision.
Is it amazing without names?
I don't need to know who makes what money. No. Um, as Ms. Unley said, if you create a study where you just give people's titles, I'm good with that. I do not need to know who they are, period.
Well, you do need to know when they're lying about people's being in positions a certain amount of time.
Um, I agree with you, also, it was asked to have a minimum at fifteen dollars. Now all of a sudden, this is going, this is getting crazy. You got the fifteen dollars, now you want to give people's names. I think this is ludicrous. Just give fifteen dollars, and that's...
Mr. Whiffer.
So I would say this, so I'm the one advocating for fifteen dollars now, okay? So this last study we had with Evergreen, with the higher-ups or whatever, they were big rockets, uh, only because we want to make sure we get it right first time, with, if this lady's eight years in, and she's getting paid for three years' experience, why are we gonna go back and, we need to retroactive the money, is that, is that something we can do? So if we only get to December first, retroactive to October, November, whatever, and pay the money. There's nobody more on the board than me that wants fifteen dollars an hour, that's still too late.
That's right.
So, I wanted to get paid, but like I said, made a mistake before, because some people, and, and you're still saying, we still have mistakes that we have to go back. So let's look at the name, look at the title, whatever, make sure there's no mistakes, and that's it. Push forward.
Experience...
I, I agree with Mr. Whiffer and what he's saying. I, I don't, I, I know it's hard, Ms. Unley, I'm not trying to make your job harder, I'm definitely not trying to do that, but we could retro to pay, but at the same time, it's just like you said, position, number, steps, and grade, years of experience, and where they're at. I don't, I, I'm, you know, I think majority, I don't need to know their names, but... But if the number was, and how many years of service, yeah, steps and grade, you did your chart before, I mean, it, it looked really good, and it's very easy to follow, very easy to read.
Okay, so I'm hearing just a couple different things.
You said it with the names, it's an employee number, that has names.
I thought the title would be appropriate, because if not, you don't know where they fall in the band. You don't know where they work, where, which band they would belong on, which level, if, without the title. That, that's the reason I was saying the title.
Right, you got the title, which is a pay band.
So if I, if I just, if I just do an ID number...
Pay band, one year's of service, tenth band, you make...
Right, you don't know if that per, if I just give an ID number, you don't know if that person is a cafeteria worker, or instructional aide, or, or whatever the case would be. So that's why I was suggesting job title. And, and I'm also confused, because I hear, I hear Mr. Spidey saying, January pay, July first pay, um, previous...
That was just a suggestion.
Okay, okay, so I mean, how, how many K levels do, and then I'm hearing Mr. Neal say he wants to see yours' experience as well, so...
I think name, years of experience, title, current...
No, no!
Like the personnel list, still, you have the personnel list.
So do you want their salary as of July first, without, remember, everybody got five percent July first? So would you like to see the July first salary, and then what they got a couple months ago, and then the new one? So July first, where everybody got five percent, and then the first adjustment, and now the proposed adjustment, so you want to see three levels for two hundred and sixty people?
Just a current pay, the current pay.
They're getting away with it.
I hope they go around the board, there was no names.
No names!
I mean, we need to, uh, we have, we have how many years of experience?
However, you want to identify, but not, yes, all the service workers.
So you want this at November twelfth? Um, and our short staff will make sure that we try to get that information for you, however, remember, we're still trying to do ERP.
I agree, um, with regard to strategic planning, I wanted to publicly thank Ms. Unley for leading the first committee meeting on that week, and looking forward to continuing to contribute there. Second of three things, the county audit committee meeting, it moved from October ten to October seventeen, that's the only reason I haven't provided meeting highlights, I will after the meeting on Thursday. And I also just want to say, I know I sent an email about it, that I do look forward to when we are able to move forward, as we already committed to, to looking at student conduct policy considerations. That's it.
I thank everyone for their comments, and, um...
Just wanted to, um, say thank you publicly to everyone who came out tonight. Please do not let this be your last school board meeting. I also wanted to say publicly that out of nine of us, only two of us attended the VSBA workshop on evaluations. I feel really like I'm disappointed that all of us were not there when this has been a point of contention for why all of us should have been there.
There is a second one in the spring. How do you evaluate somebody after a... See you in your mic, please?
I did not attend, this is concerning, because I have my work obligation, but I planned to attend it all in the spring. I was able to attend the role being at Arcaden, who went for them, for the homecoming, our homecoming event was a success, and...
I would just say, uh, the attendance tonight, which is awesome that everybody came out, whatever, uh, full of energy, everybody came out, you know, because of the negative, which positively bring out people, fill the whole place up, everything.
Give us a reason.
A lot of idiots, whether they had like five people there, which, since more come out, we're, we're very much appreciated.
As you said, school board member comments, I, I took a day off work last weekend touring several schools in my district, I take orders, I've been to the principals, one principal sat time desk for me around the school. I really enjoyed myself, thank you for the welcome. I now visited a couple of guys at lunchtime, and I didn't mean to interrupt, but thank you for taking time and talking to me. Um, I was able to sneak away again today from work, and I attended farm day right here at Tascany Elementary School. It was very well put together, the kids all seemed to have fun, and I had fun. I didn't realize I knew as many guys as I know any trackers that I do, but you're not gonna stop getting up there too. But, um, but they, the kids really seemed to enjoy themselves, whoever put that together, thank you, I'm sure it was collaboration from a lot of people. Um, and, and just on a added note, if, if you're looking for a board number to volunteer for this, take care of ours, but I, I would like to be considered. Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Johnson. And, and one more thing, and I may have misunderstood the meeting last week, but were we gonna talk about date detectors tonight, or is that something that's just gonna get, we have to get the information together, follow through, and then a little more?
We'll get ready to have a, some principals are getting ready to meet with a representative for the date detectors.
Okay, okay.
It's in the... And, Chance, may I, may I do one, we go back based on a topic that was raised that I forgot to mention?
So, um, absolutely, so, um, just a quick reminder that, um, highlights from the superintendent evaluation meeting were shared, and I'll be very vague, and including, um, an area or two where some action needs to be taken, because of closed session, um, discussions, just wanted to bring it back.
There were several things that I was tasked to, um, look into, and one of them was the Alped building and Reconnect building. So, um, everyone knows that we're in the process of relocating our Alped and our Reconnect students into another location, a house in Parsley. However, um, after we got the lease, and consulted with the lawyer, the lawyer revised the contract, and the contract, um, she didn't want us to put in the contract that we would pay legal fees if anything happened, and so when we sent that back to, um, the leasing, they don't want to take that out. So right now, we're in the middle of negotiations of how we're gonna present the lease, because we can't, um, sign a lease where both lawyers are saying, you know, they can't come to an agreement. So that's where we are with that. Um, the policies, um, I think Dr. Johnson wanted to know about what other school divisions do with elementary and middle school students who have been cohort twice and who have been suspended. Um, we checked and delicate correctly on this, we, um, talked with, um, schools in our cohort, and we don't, there was no school in our cohort that hardly expels students. Uh, we did find several schools that in our cohort that would suspend a student for three hundred and sixty-five days for being major offenses, but we didn't find any that have some of the same practices that we do. And I know that was the interest, to see how we would proceed, or how we would move forward. So we might need to go back and look at that again. Um, as far as ATS, as our alternative to suspension, that was our new alternative ED program for last year for our elementary students, and there was a question about how was that program, how did it go? So we had, last year at Kennedy Town, we served sixty-one students, and we only had eight teachers, and at Affirmative, we served seventy students, and we had nine different years. So that was, those were the answers to some of the questions that you asked me to talk out. Um, as far as myself, um, my goals, I have copies of my goals for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year, wherever it went, and I will make sure each one of you have a copy of those, and they are according to the EDOE standards. Um, I gave you a copy of my professional development for this year, so you already have that. I had my first, um, meeting last night with my parent and community advisory group, and my teacher advisory group, they went really well, and I will kind of give you a summary right at the summary. But the other thing is the student representative to the school board, we do have a representative to the school board. Um, this is student senior at Manuel High School named Rihanna Taylor. So if you want me to, I can make sure she's presented at the next board meeting. That's all right.
The board will now adjourn to close meeting.